Adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Thank you to those who are attending tonight's committee meeting virtually. As has been our past practice, we will do our best to encourage your participation and provide reminders on how you can send comments or questions to us this evening. There are two ways we've established for the public to participate in our public meetings here, our virtual public meetings. The first opportunity is that you can send an email to committeequestions, again, committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Please make sure to leave your name, address, and the agenda item you'd like to leave a comment or a question for, so we can read that or respond to your question. Or you can phone us at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please leave your name, your address, and the agenda item you'd like to comment or leave a question for, so that we can provide an answer and make sure that we will make that a part of our record. We will update you throughout our presentation this evening. Before the board does take any action, we will be sure to read your comment or your question, and that will provide us an opportunity to provide an answer, and that will then give the board an opportunity to move forward. That's all I have, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and please feel free to reemphasize that throughout the night at your discretion. The meeting of the Education and Pupil Services Committee will please come to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
As I state your name, can you please state you are here and can hear the proceedings? Dr. Hague?
I am here and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Desneuer?
I am here and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am here and can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Neal?
This is David Neal. I am here and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Dawes?
Good evening. I am here and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Fields?
Hello. I am here and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Curry?
Good evening. This is Gina Curry. I am here and I can hear the proceeding.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Good evening. This is Mrs. Mitchell. I can hear the proceedings and I am present.
Mr. Brown?
I am here. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The following motions shall be applicable for tonight's Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Policy 003 allows for the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis and the governor's closure order, I make the following motions for, to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, please state your name. Thank you. All those opposed, please state your name for the record. Anyone upstanding, please state your name for the record. Mr. Rogers, will this apply for the Finance and Operations Committee meeting as well, or would we do this again?
This can apply, and we can just note that all members are still present as, at the start of the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Motion carries. I will now turn over the Education and Pupil Services Committee agenda to co-chair Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. How is everyone tonight? Mr. Marshall, will you please begin with an overview of your agenda items for this evening?
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. So tonight, we have two agenda items. The first one is Title I School Level Plans. Mr. Salerno, our Director of Elementary Education, will provide an overview of the district elementary school Title I plans that need to be board-approved at the September meeting. This is a board action item for tonight. Second agenda item is policies that were, will be up for a second reading come the September regular board meeting. And there are three policies, Policy 247, hazing, Policy 317.1, educator misconduct, and Policy 824, maintaining professional adult-student boundaries. And those are the two agenda items we have for tonight. So with your permission, Ms. Mitchell-
Mr. Marshall, I think we can proceed with agenda item number one.
Thank you. So I'm going to invite Mr. Salerno up to the podium or to the desk, and he will give the presentation on Title I school proven plans.
Thank you, Mr. Marshallleck, and good evening, President Brown, and all of the members of the Upper Darby School Board, and to central administration, Dr. McGary, and all of the members of the public who are viewing this presentation online on our YouTube channel. Thank you for having me here this evening to review the new tool that has been issued through the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the future-ready comprehensive planning purposes. And specifically, this evening, we are going to review the plans that have been submitted and finalized for our Title I schools at the elementary level specifically in the Upper Darby School District. A quick overview of the agenda, as you can see here on the screen, we are going to, I am going to give an overview of the new online planning tool. Brand new, just went live within the last few months. The Title I school data trends, very quickly, there are hundreds of pages of comprehensive plans for our elementary Title I schools that have been attached to board docs for this evening. We're not going to go page by page, thankfully, but we will, I will give some just overlying trends for the schools identified, and then some general next steps, what we're looking to in terms of some sample goals for these schools and their plans, and how we plan to accomplish these goals. What action steps we need to implement, what resources we are going to use, and then we are going to open it up for some questions from the board at the end. So as I mentioned, the Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Tool is brand-new. This was recently unveiled within the last few months towards the end of the spring, early summer. And after a few glitches on the part of PDE in terms of getting the tool up and running, it is now finally up and running, almost 100% live for the most part. There are certain aspects of it that are still being finalized, but the expectation is now for all of the schools across the Commonwealth to be able to use this Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Tool. In years past, I would say for at least maybe the last 10 to 12 years, all of our schools and our district administration and our school-level planning teams have utilized a somewhat outdated version of this tool online. After a lot of feedback from schools, such as Upper Darby School District, PDE has rolled out this new online planning tool, and it does really steer you specifically in the direction when you're accomplishing the planning using this tool, using the Future Ready PA Index. So a lot of the information, a lot of the questions and the planning revolve around referring back to the Future Ready PA Index and the achievement and growth trends that you can find within the PA Future Ready Index, which is available not only to us as school administrators and educators, but to the public as well. It is a public site. You can go and research any school district across the Commonwealth and any school within that school district. The Upper Darby School designations are important to indicate because previously, the school board, I believe it was in the June board meeting, approved our ATSI, our Additional Targeted Support and Improvement Schools, Beverly Hills Middle School and Charles Kelly Elementary Schools, their school-level plans, using this planning tool. At the time, even then, just a few months ago, the school board actually received a Word document because the planning tool was still not live and up and running at that point when the plans were approved. They have since been added to the new Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Tool and have been approved. We also have some TSI schools, or Targeted Support and Improvement Schools. And the TSI designation applies to Westbrook Park Elementary School and also to Bywood Elementary School. In addition to that, it applies to Upper Darby High School, but since Upper Darby High School is not a Title I school, that is not a school that has this plan due in September. So therefore, all of our schools, including Upper Darby High School as a TSI school, will have their plans above and beyond the plans that we're reviewing this evening, completed and presented before the board traditionally as we do in October or November. So the schools that we are focusing on today are Title I schools, which do include the two TSI schools, Westbrook Park and Bywood. So we're talking about Bywood, Westbrook Park, Stonehurst, the kindergarten center, Senko, and Highland Park Elementary School specifically. The school-level plans and the overview report have been updated to board docs and are available for public consumption and for the board to review. Like I said, they are rather extensive plans, and to be perfectly honest with you, the way that the plan output is finalized, it's not as clean as I would like it to be, but once the plan, you hit that button, there's no modifying the format of that plan. So what you see is basically what the PDE tool is capable of producing. So that's not, if you see formatting issues, something that doesn't look visually as appealing as I would like it to look, that is really because that is the way that the tool is designed, and they're still fine-tuning that, I believe. But again, it's important to note that for this new planning tool, unlike the previous planning tool that we're very accustomed to using, it definitely guides you directly to the Future Ready PA Index, and that is the centerpiece of this planning tool. So just as a quick review, with that being said, just a quick review of the PA Future Ready Index indicators. There are three different indicators that you're looking for on the Future Ready PA Index site. The state assessment measures, the on-track measures, and the college and career measures. Within those, you can find, the state assessment measures include, excuse me, percent proficient or advanced on the PSSA. Also, meeting annual growth expectations, which is also P-VAS, and percent advanced on the PSSA. The on-track measures include EL proficiency, regular attendance, and grade-three early indicators of success. For our purposes in our school district, we use the Winter MAP Assessment, or Measure of Academic Progress, as the three, grade-three on-track measure. Number three, the college and career measures include the career readiness benchmarks and the PDE, this is a PDE indicator. Here's a quick look at the Future Ready PA Index dashboard. This is what you would see if you were logging into any one specific school. And you see a lot of colors underneath the three different measures that I reviewed, the state assessment measures, the on-track measures, and the college and career measures. So you see colors and you see either arrows or circles, and I think this is an important part here to make sure that there's an understanding of what this means, just as a general overview, because this is what we are looking at as administrators and school-level planning teams when we log into the Future Ready PA Index dashboard and we're looking and digesting this data. The colors indicate either blue, which you can see on the screen, meaning that if you achieve a level of blue in any of the indicators, that means you meet or exceed the statewide goal. Green indicates that you have met or exceeded the interim target, and red indicates that you are not meeting the statewide goal or interim target. So that's the color indication, the coded system that we are seeing here. Additionally, you will see either arrows pointing up, arrows pointing down, or no arrow at all, and instead just a circle. An arrow up indicates an increase in performance from the previous year. Just a circle and not an arrow indicates that that group has maintained the same level of performance from the previous year for that indicator. And an arrow pointing down shows that there is a decrease in performance from a previous year. So let's take a quick look at an example of this information for Upper Darby School District. Here's an example of the student growth that we are seeing, growth that we are seeing. One of the strengths that we are seeing across the district, and certainly specific to the six schools that the plans are seeking board approval to move forward to the foray vote at the September meeting. When we are looking at the highlighted or circled sections here representing academic growth expectations in English and mathematics, we are seeing a trend of our students exceeding the standard expected in terms of growth in those areas. So again, you can see here on the slide that 100% of schools, given the data, we did not take the PSSAs last year because of the mandatory shutdown, but the data that is on the PA Future Ready Index is representative of the last time the students took the PSSAs, and 100% of our schools did meet or exceed the annual growth expectations in one or more of the tested subject areas. So this is an overarching theme throughout the schools across specifically the elementary level and K-12. So the student growth is certainly a point of pride right now for our schools and one of the trends that you will see across all of the plans this evening. Opportunities for growth, again, continue to focus in on that achievement piece. So you can see here the state assessment measure indicating the percent of proficient or advanced students in the area of ELA and mathematics. You can see red. The arrows are pointing in an upward direction, indicating that there is an increase in performance from the previous year, which is positive. However, that red does indicate, again, that we are not meeting the statewide goal and the interim targets for student achievement. Specifically, the percentage of proficient and advanced students in ELA and mathematics. And this is a trend, again, that is fairly consistent across the board for our Future Ready PA Index data in Upper Darby School District. So what does this mean? Basically, I, when I was thinking about this, I went back to our countless P-VAS trainings that we get every year and are very worthwhile, and our administrators and our teams participate in annually, that Dr. Manfree has been a part of, that Christine Kelly, the Curriculum and Instruction Department, our school administrators, Dr. McGary have been a part of. And there's a really nice analogy, a representation showing a baseball field and relating baseball to the PA Value Added Assessment System, or P-VAS. This is not just a play at Dr. McGary, loving baseball and coaching baseball, that's just an extra benefit here. But it also, I think, gives people, when you connect people, something familiar, it sometimes helps with the understanding. So there is a nine-minute video, if anyone's super interested and you want to YouTube this, there's a nine-minute video from PDE that illustrates this. I'm going to attempt to do this in a much shorter, more abridged version, representing exactly what this means here with the baseball analogy that we are seeing this evening up on the screen. So basically, you can see here- So basically, you can see here on the baseball diamond, you see first, second, and third base and home plate here, and there are runners on the baseball field. Each runner represents a group of students. And the bases represent either first base, our lower achieving students, second base there, you see our group of students would be our middle achieving students, and on third base, our highest achieving students. The base the runner reaches is what they have achieved, that group of students, what they have achieved. Just like baseball, once a runner is on a base, something else needs to happen before they can advance to the next base. In baseball, that could be a hit, it could be a walk, it could be a hit-by pitch. With our analogy relating it to education, students end the year at a certain level of achievement, and then, just like baseball, something else needs to happen. What that thing is, is instruction and learning. That needs to happen. So our student group on first base, which again, is our lower achieving students, if they stay on first base from one year to the next, they have maintained their position. We cannot have our students on first base maintain that same position. We need to demonstrate growth above and beyond just maintaining one year worth of growth. This is represented back to that color field of blue. We need to have students demonstrating that they are exceeding the growth expectation. While overall, our students are exceeding, we do have some students that are not, some student groups that are not. We need our lowest achieving students specifically to, again, exceed the growth expectations. Otherwise, they will be stranded, like the baseball analogy, on first base. We need to move the students from the lower achieving first base to the middle achieving second base, to the higher achieving third base, and even our higher achieving students, our highest achieving students, we need to get them to move from third base to home. We need them to score. We need them to, again, either maintain their growth, which is not as bad as maintaining for our lower achieving students because they're still achieving a high level or maintaining a high level of achievement. It's all about us making sure that we are having those student groups move. Of course, unlike baseball, our student groups could move in between first and second base. So they are still technically maybe a low achieving student, but they are demonstrating more, maybe a little bit more than one year's worth of growth. So the name of the game here, to reference the analogy again, is to make sure that our teachers, that our administrators, that our central administrators, such as myself, we are looking at the, not just the state assessment data, but our local assessment data, our measure of academic progress data, setting specific goals for individual students, groups of students, student groups that are showing data trends, and making sure that we are moving them from low to middle to high achieving. Here's a sample goal for our Future Ready Comprehensive Planning. You will see this embedded within all of the plans of the six schools included on board docs. And the sample goal would include basically the third grade, for the sake of the example, student group will meet or exceed, again, hopefully exceed, the 2020 expected reading or math student growth norms, and that could be 10.8 RIT points of growth as measured from the fall to the spring for a measure of academic progress in ELA or math, or math for the measure of academic progress benchmarks, benchmark assessment. So this is a sample goal that you will see embedded within all of the plans, specifically this year, because we did not take the PSSAs last year. We did not have the opportunity. This time of year is when we start getting the raw data numbers from PDE relative to our third, fourth, and fifth grade PSSA results, and we do not have that information since students did not take the assessment. Instead, we are going to need to rely heavily on not just the Future Ready PA Index data, but even more specifically on our measure of academic progress benchmark assessments. So what are some of our next steps and how do we look to accomplish these goals that we have set for our students? First, from our curriculum department, we have the adoption and implementation of some new curricular resources. We've already discussed publicly at a board meeting, our new HMH ELA resources that were rolled out last year, and we continue to professionally develop our teachers on. We have our new math program, Envision Math, that we are very excited about, that the teachers are, just this week, receiving professional development on, and Science and Social Studies. In addition to that, continued professional development, again, with learning targets and our partnership with the McKay Consulting Group, math instructional practices, and our AIM Pathways to Proficient Reading, which is something that we are very proud of. That was Dr. McGary's vision, and we have partnered with the AIM Institute to create a very worthwhile professional development opportunity specifically for our teachers of our youngest students, our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers, in the area of reading and the science of teaching students how to read. In addition to that, we have our continued student services initiatives, including PBIS and our social-emotional learning, our trauma-informed care, and our work with the International Institute for Restorative Practices and our continued professional development opportunities in that area. Again, that was a very general overview of the plans. They are available for public consumption and will be posted to the school's websites. Additionally, just this week, again, they are being reviewed with the staff as a part of the goals for the year, and they will be presented at virtual home and school meetings. And they are all in draft form, and they are intentionally in draft form because the expectation is that they are being revisited, that they are being amended, there are goals being added, action steps being added. So the plans are in a draft form almost indefinitely. While we have to submit them technically at any time, the principals can and are encouraged to, with their teams, amend the plans. One note of, one point as well that's important, the school board did approve plans in December, and the plans are very similar from the plans in December because, to be honest, we then adjourned and we had a mandatory shutdown in the spring, and we do not have the data points we would otherwise have. The plans are, the bones of the plans are very similar, but some of the goals, and because this new Future Ready Planning Tool guides you specifically to the PA Future Ready Planning Index, a lot of the goals center specifically around that because that is the direction that they, the planning tool generally guides you in. At this time, I would like to ask the board if they have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno, for the thorough presentation. I am sure that with all of the things that we have implemented and the professional development, that we're going to hit a lot of home runs with our kids in the coming years. So thank you. Are there any questions, are there any questions from board members?
This is Ed Brown. I do have a question. I think it was chart nine, the charts aren't numbered for some reason, but it's the one, that one, that one there. The insert, the growth norm here, who establishes that growth target? Is that something you establish, or I just wanted to know, how is that established?
Good question. So the NWEA, or the Northwest Evaluation Association, through the measure of academic progress, our MAP benchmark assessment, just recently updated the growth norms. So there are now 2020 growth norms. For the longest time, even last year, Mr. Brown, we were using the, I believe it was 2015 MAP growth norms. So a new study was completed, and now this year, for the first time, the NWEA growth norms have been updated to reflect a 2020 growth norm table. That information is something that we provide, I provide, to the elementary principals with the expectation that they are looking at those growth norms and setting realistic goals, achievable goals, for their student groups relative to measures from the fall to the winter, and then from the winter to the spring, and obviously from the fall to the spring. So they have laid out in their plans these goals kind of as mile markers along the way to make sure that we are doing our best to keep up with those interim targets set by the PA Future Ready Planning Index and PDE. So it's a combination of goals that we have and expectation that they are embedding these within them, but the growth norms are set by NWEA.
Thank you very much.
While any other board members are formulating questions, I do just want to remind the public that if you have any questions on this particular presentation, to please email committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org or call 610-789-7200, extension 2000. In your email or phone call, please state your name, your address, and the agenda item that you want to have a question or comment about so that we can make sure that's part of our record. Is there any other questions from board members on this presentation? It doesn't look like it. Aronda, do you see any more questions from board members?
No questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Salerno, great presentation. I guess we can move on to agenda item number two. Mr. Marshallack, would you like to review it and then turn it over to Mr. Des Neuer?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Salerno, for the presentation. So tonight, as I mentioned earlier, we have three policies to discuss. Policy 247, hazing. Policy 317.1 is educator misconduct, and policy 824, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Des Neuer to take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Marshallack. This is Mr. Des Neuer. As far as the three policies on the agenda this evening, the modifications to these policies are slight modifications and corrections after changes to these policies were adopted at our August 11th board meeting. There were a number of changes to policies required by changes to the Title IX federal education law, and those, Title IX governs discrimination on the basis of sex in educational settings in this country. And in May, the U.S. Department of Education released a very extensive set of updates to the Title IX rule or legislation, and that required many changes to not just policies, but procedures and training and so forth, that these, more information on those changes was provided at the July 28 meeting and can be found in the record from that meeting. The, in the changes made at the August 11th school board meeting, some things were missed. And the three policies on the agenda this evening, 247, hazing, 317.1, educator misconduct, and 824, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. As I mentioned a minute ago, these are minor changes to better conform these policies to the revisions in Title IX. And there will be, there are still some additional modifications coming to policies 103 and 104 at a minimum, and this simply represents changes that were missed when we adopted the revised policies on August 11. There were a large number of policies from, we modified, there were a large number of modifications to each policy, and we simply missed a few things. So those will be getting corrected over the coming meetings. So that concludes my presentation on the policies up for consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Des Neuer. Just for clarity's sake, for those watching along that might have not watched the other meetings, the Title IX revisions came very quickly and at the last minute. So it's not that we missed things, it's that things are still being clarified, and there will probably be revisions, just like all of our other policies, you know, when certain things change, the PSBA issues, and that's the Pennsylvania School Boards Association issues, changes that we have to make to policies. So bear with us as we get through this, but our policies as far as dealing with Title IX issues are in place in the district. So that's about it.
Yes. The revisions to Title IX that were issued in early May by the U.S. Department of Education required that we make changes to our policies and approve those changes by August 14. So by adopting the changes at the August 11th board meeting, we did meet that deadline. And this is just further modifications to correct some oversights in these policies.
Thank you, Mr. Des Neuer. We will have to revise those recently approved policies again, and we are following the investigative requirements and supportive measures. We'll be fine-tuning these policies in the next few board meetings, so please follow along. Are there any questions or comments from board members on these three policies? I don't see any. Am I missing anybody? Oh, Dr. McGary has a comment.
As we move through these policies and fine-tune them, I do want to be clear that we will be posting information on the district website, making it clear to students and families and staff. While we will fine-tune, it's important that everybody knows the Title IX updates and requirements, and that in the district, Mr. Marshallack will be the head of the Title IX, the Title IX coordinator here for the school district. So those who are reviewing this evening with your students as we go through the school year know that we will be following the investigative procedures with the recent updates, and this information will be made available in handbooks as well as on the district website, and Mr. Marshallack will be the district Title IX coordinator.
If I may, Dr. McGary. If I may, the information is posted under the Human Resources section of our district website, along with the training information that all district administrators went through recently, along with the, and also the links to the policies and then my contact information as well. So that is currently on the district website under the Human Resources page for your information, for everyone's information.
Thank you, Mr. Marshallack. Is there any other comments or questions from board members on these three policy revisions? Okay, I still don't see any. So I think right now, we're going to move on to public comments. Mrs. Stewart, is there any public comment on the agenda items for Education and Pupil Services?
There is no comment for Education and Pupil Services.
I do know that there were some comments and questions that came in, but they did not pertain to tonight's agenda items, and I know that the staff is making sure that those questions are answered and the issues are addressed. So this time, I'll turn the meeting back over to President Brown.
Thank you. Didn't you, Mrs. Mitchell, did you want to have Mr. Marshallack review the agenda items presented this evening?
Sure. You're right, we have to review the agenda items. Mr. Marshallack?
Certainly. So tonight, there were two agenda items, the first of which, Mr. Salerno did a review of the Title I, elementary Title I school improvement plans. This is for board action for, in the September voting meeting. Number two, agenda number two is our policies that will be up for a second reading in September, at the September board meeting as well.
So is everyone comfortable with moving agenda item number one forward?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, this is Mrs. Curry. I just have a question. I was just wondering, I thought that agenda item one was informational. Am I incorrect?
That item originally was going to be informational regarding the planning, but I think Mr. Salerno recently found out, and I apologize. I think Mr. Solano recently found out, and I apologize, I thought that the board was updated on that, that recently found out that it now requires board action. So that item had to shift to a board action item because we were misinformed and then found out due to Mr. Solano's due diligence, he was emailing and contacting, and he finally, you know, got ahold of somebody who gave him the proper answer that the board does have to vote on those plans. So they will be up with a resolution at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McGary.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is anyone opposed to moving the first agenda item, Title I school level plans, forward? I guess not. Okay. So I think everyone is comfortable, I think we have consensus to move Agenda Item Number One forward. Agenda Item Number Two, is the board comfortable with moving -- we'll do each policy separate. Policy 247 forward?
Yes.
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 Is anyone not comfortable with moving Policy 247 forward? Okay. So I think Policy 247 can move forward to the next board meeting. Policy 317.1 educator misconduct, is everyone okay with moving that forward?
Yes.
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 Anyone uncomfortable with moving Policy 317.1 forward? Policy 317.1 moves forward to the next board meeting. Policy 824 maintaining professional adult plus student boundaries, is everyone comfortable with moving that forward?
Yes.
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 Anyone uncomfortable with moving it forward? Okay. So that one moved forward, I saw. Now, I will turn it back over to Mr. Brown to adjourn this.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. All in favor, please.
Second.
Thank you. For the second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Will take five minutes to allow the finance and operations to get set up. Thank you very much. Welcome back. We'll now begin the Finance and Operations Committee. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting will please come to order. I will now turn it over to Dr. Haig.
Thank you, Board President Brown. And I will turn it up over to Mr. Rogers to give us an overview of the agenda.
Tonight, we have one agenda item that is informational. It's the Use of Facility System Implementation Update. District Administration, more specifically, the Controller of the District, Marvin Lee, will give an update on the progress we've made implementing the new Use of Facilities Program, Facilitron, and also give a little overview for the public on how they can interact with the system. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Marvin and allow him to do his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. My name is Marvin Lee from the Business Office, and thank you very much for the opportunity to give you an update on the Use of Facility System Implementation. Next page, please. So a quick recap of what we presented in June 2020. So the Business Office made a case about implementing a new Use of Facility System through Facilitron or whatever someone. And during the last presentation, we briefly talked about Use of Facility Profile based on the fiscal year 19. So we had 67 unique outside users, and they're mostly recurring users. And we had 173 total requests, 94 indoor events, and 79 outdoor events. And our community users were on our property nearly 6,000 days in our fiscal year 19, 2,500 indoor days, and more than 3,400 outdoor days. And 96% of the total Use of Facility were related to athletic events. We also explained the benefits of switching to the new system. We wanted to improve the community user experience. We wanted to improve the internal processes. We also wanted to improve communications to all parties and consolidate all calendars into one master calendar. Next page, please. So here's the life cycle of each request. Step number one, external user will create an online account and pro request through Facilitron website. So to make sure that everybody has internet access, the Recreation Office made a desktop available to public to use. After those requests are submitted, the Facilitron team will review the insurance information and the collector will receive it before the request is presented to our principals. Once the basic requirements are met, our principals will review and approve the request. And there's one thing I would like to mention about the principal approval process. The secondary school sporting venues such as high school stadium, swimming pool, or basketball court will be approved by the district athletic director before the request is presented to the principal. We wanted to make sure that our own athletes have priority over external users. After the principal approval, the Business Office will collect the relevant information, and the principal's Use of Facility report to the board will be due and approved. Once they're fully approved, all users will receive email notification with their permits. And finally, on the date of the event, the Recreation Department will make sure the external users have access to the site. Next page, please. So here's what we have done so far to implement the system. Obviously, we had to get approval from the board to move forward the Facilitron new system, and the contract was fully approved. If you remember the terms, we have a great deal. We pay 10% of the cost fees for the Use of Facility System, and we pay official 4% of the cost fee for the work order management system. The website is fully built and fulfills the website with our own information, and our faculty's curriculum website is updated as well. And at this time, all three calendars are fully integrated into a single platform. Now we can see UDSB Master Calendar, School Based Activated Calendar, and Outside User Use of Facility Calendar into a single platform. I would like to thank Vanda and Bartolinski for making this happen for us. The staff and principal were fully trained on how to use the system, and our Recreation Department reached out to 67 organizations, either through phone, email, or regular mail at this time. And the website is available to the public right now. One more thing, the Police Management Department also started having conversations about building the work order management system with Facilitron. We are very excited to have the work order management system, but we will probably -- we'll tackle that after the school opening. Next page, please. So this is what the outside users will see when they access our website. They will see the thumbnails of our schools. If they click on each school, each users will see available spaces in each school. They will be able to see what the spaces can be used for, and the cost, and the available dates. Once they select a site, space, date, and time, they can move forward with a reservation process. Again, if you're familiar with a basic e-collage website like Amazon.com or Airbnb.com, you will have no problem going through the process. If you have any issues, you can reach out to Facilitron or Lynn in our Recreation Office. Lynn's contact information is on our website. As of now, we have before pictures of our spaces in the website, but once the Facilitron travel restriction is lifted, a professional photographer will be visiting all our websites, take pictures, and upload those new pictures into our website, so outside users will be able to see what each space actually looks like. Next page, please. The final page is about the Use of Facilities during the pandemic. So there's a lot of conversation, discussion locally, statewide, and also nationally. As of today, we will not allow any indoor users' Use of Spaces by outside users, but we will allow outside Use of Space with the permission of Health and Safety Plan of each event. So if any organization wants to use outside of the outside building, outside Use of the building, they will have to sign an large acknowledged form saying that they're going to be following their own health and safety plan. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I was hoping to hear a little bit more about what we expect from the Health and Safety Plan, because I think our community groups that have been using the fields will want to know more. Can you say a little bit more about what we expect?
Sure. Yeah. So we developed the acknowledged form based on the School District Athletic Health and Safety Plan that was approved by the board on July 14 of 2020. So that, our guidelines include a temperature checking prior to the event, Use of Transventilators and Disinfectant Wipes, wearing mask protocols, social distancing protocols, and finally, the maximum allowed number of users in each event based on the status of our locality. So yellow face will allow 25 people, and the green face will allow 250 people. So our acknowledged form basically mirrors our School District Athletic Health and Safety Plan.
Great, thank you. I want to add to other comments from the board. Are there other comments, Mrs. Beaufort?
There are actually three comments, two from the board and one from Superintendent McGary. Mr. Neal, David Neal?
Thank you, Aronda. Thank you, Dr. Haig. Thank you, Marvin, for your presentation. In regards to the professional photography, is it just indoor or is it also outdoor photography that will be taking place? And will they be using like a drone to take aerial photos? Because I know if you look on Google Maps, fields that we have renovated still are not showing up, and so I want to make sure that we have like the most up-to-date photos, even if it's aerial.
Sure. So the photo will be based on like a for indoor and outdoor, and we will add whether they may be using the drones, but if they don't have that drone, we can provide our own pictures to them so they can use our pictures. Okay, thank you.
Dr. McGary?
I just want to follow up to some of the comments that Marvin is providing and to Dr. Haig's questions. Mr. -- Dr. Manfred and I met with the Clifton Powell Boys Club last evening and talked about some of these very requests about the Use of Facilities and Use of Fields, following up what Marvin's talking about as regarding our health and safety plan, not only for the reopening of schools, but also for our athletic plan. We have an athletic plan that's been approved that we will adhere to, you know, how we strengthen, condition our athletes. I'd like to follow up that our youth programs would like to have access to our facilities. What we're proposing, and I've already reached out to the township as well, and I let them know that we would be having this conversation this evening, that we'd like to propose some kind of a process where you would review our district plan for reopening, meeting the CDC guidelines and Chester County Department of Health guidelines, as well as our health plan that we have for athletic programs. Submit a health plan, and we'll have somewhat of a template for them to look at and refer to to complete and turn that in. We'll review that, and then we'll bring that to the board for the board's approval using our outside facilities. If we hear, and we will make this clear to those who want permit of our fields and our facilities, that they are not following the recommended guidelines regarding having anyone participating or watching the event wearing a mask, we will also require them for a meeting with us, strike one, to play on the baseball analogies this evening, let them know that the next time there could be an opportunity where we would ask them to take on the responsibility in their running of the program for us to have someone oversee the health plan and report back to us that they're not following the health plan guidelines at a cost to their youth league. If at that point in time, they cannot get those who are participating in their program to follow these recommendations, the third strike would be we would revoke that permit and unfortunately have to shut down the use of our external facilities. Regarding internal facilities, I do not believe we will be allowing that to happen until there is a relaxing of the number of people in a space at one time and until we can return for full instruction with our students in our buildings. This is simply a review on how we can allow outside activities to take place. Thank you.
Mr. Damian War Savage?
Hi, everyone. Hi, Marvin. Really, really good presentation, and I just had a quick question for you if you don't mind. Now, thinking of the way that we're going to be processing facilities requests, I'm thinking of branding, our messaging, our overarching message, as well as the equity piece. And specifically, I'm looking at keyword opportunities as well as equity. And the question ultimately to you, Marvin, is of the people that had used our facilities in the years from last year, do you feel, in your view, that it represents a makeup of the community as a whole? And if not, do you see that there's an opportunity for us to reach out to other areas of the community that might not have even been aware that they could actually rent at very little cost, or rather, at a reasonable cost to them, some of these facilities that our tax base has been very generous in allowing us to upkeep all these years? So what are your thoughts?
So we haven't really done a demographic study of our users at this time, but in our community users have a significant discount of using our facilities. So I think that's something that we can look into with Vanda, to reaching out to different communities to make sure they have the facilities available for their use.
I just want to follow up to that as well. In the conversations that we had last evening, one of the things we have to work on as a school district is this guaranteed, I put a permit in, and the building and facility is mine for a year. is mine for a year, but that I don't show up and use it. What we're finding out is some youth leagues want to use it on a Saturday, and another youth organization has it blocked out for a Saturday, but they're not even using it. That, that has to stop. You know, this equity piece, I think, is important. It also has to be a situation where if there's an open space and no one's using it, we have to let someone access this, access it to use it. We found that in our conversations last evening with some youth programs and other youth programs, that there's been a history, and, and we're coming to understand this in this administration now, of blocking out certain facilities a year at a time, but not using them necessarily. And that prevents equitable access to those who would actually like to use them. That will no longer be allowable in this, in this process.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes, I just have two quick questions. Are there, I don't know where it is, maybe Mr. Lee or, or Mr. Rogers can direct me to it. Are there guidelines for the Use of Facilities, like for nonprofits, or are there any requirements for the Use of Facilities, or can anyone just request it?
So the guidelines that are in place are based on the board policy and the AR. So if anybody wants to access those, they can go right onto the Board Docs website and pull down the policies for Policy 707.
So if they go to, to use the, the new system, will it direct them? Will it have a link to it so they'll know, you know, what the requirements that are in place are? Or are they expected to go to Board Docs, get that information, and then come back out and go to the link that may or may, is the link on our, will the link be on our website? I guess that's one of the questions.
The, the link is on our website, and I'll let Marvin speak to the breakdown once you're on Facilitron, because I do believe as you go in, it's almost somewhat of like a dropdown, what type of organization are you? And it feeds the information, and now that goes straight to our Recreation Department. And if there was a outside organization that's, let's say, has no affiliation with Upper Darby, they would vet that in accordance with our policy. So the request will come in, and if they see at Recreation any kind of que, whether they have questions or not, and that's how it works currently, they'll reach out before it even makes it to the Business Office, actually, let alone the board. So by the time they make it to the board, you know, you should be rest assured that it was within the board's policy, and they would vet anybody prior to that. Because there are times where we've had requests put in, and they may not be by a Upper Darby resident. And then you find out, well, the group has a majority of them, or the resident, just so happens, the person who did the work to put the request in wasn't. So they'll submit another one that goes within our policy. So, and that happens on a regular basis. That, that would still be from our Recreation Department as they got the request in from Facilitron.
Okay. Once they do a request and it's approved and it's legitimate organization, is a profile created for that organization so that it's easier the next time, or do they have to do the exact same thing every time?
I will, Marvin, if you want to speak to that, I do believe that they may create some type of username. Marvin?
Correct. I, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question?
If an organization does the, follows the process, uses Facilitron to request the facilities, and they are approved, what happens the next time they go to request it? Is a profile created for them? Is the process streamlined for them, or do they get to skip some steps where they're not vetted the same way?
Marvin, could you hear that, that time?
I feel really serious, like a technical difficulty. I'm sorry. I am so sorry that I'm not clearly hearing the question.
I, I can, I can answer that, Marvin. He's asking, do, is there a profile created? Remember when the organization have to register? He's asking if there's a profile that shortens the process so that, one, all of their basic information is already populated when they go onto the application, and, two, the vetting process is shortened the next time they apply? So the answer to the first one is yes. As far as the vetting, because each event is different, the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mitchell has a question.
Oh, I, I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. So there is a human aspect to this. I'm sorry, I had some technical difficulties as well and had to sign in on another computer. So if I missed that part of the presentation, I just want to make, there is a human aspect if someone needs help navigating this online system, correct?
Yes, there is.
That's correct.
Okay. I know in the past, sometimes, community members have called me, you know, asking questions about how to, how to do this. I think this takes some of the, some of those issues that people were encountering with going to the Recreation Department off, but I want to make sure there is someone that they can call if they have questions. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, we do have a person available in the Recreation Office, and we do also have a computer, desktop computer available for the external users in the Recreation.
Awesome. All right. And, and just one more question. How do they pay? I know there's like a nominal fee to use some facilities depending on the circumstances. How, will they be paying through Facilitron as well?
Yes. Facilitron will be collecting those fees through credit card or the bank transactions or even PayPal. And they will send us a monthly revenue to us on a monthly basis.
Will users still be able to pay by check or cash?
Check, yes. Cash, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Ms. Buford, are there any other, this is Dr. Hague. Ms. Buford, are there any other comments from the board? And if not, are there comments from the public?
Dr. Hague, there are no comments from the board or the public.
Since that is our only agenda, I believe it's time to move to public comment. You have none?
Yeah, I did, I did ask Ms. Buford if there was public comment. She said there was none. Correct, Ms. Buford?
That's correct.
Sorry, that was supposed to happen after the, after the agenda review, Mr. Rogers. I, I missed the protocol. So shall we turn it back to Mr. Brown for adjournment?
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Second, David Neal.
Second. Thank you, David Neal. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.